Commissioner, just to order. This meeting is being recorded and I think that this meeting will become more public record. No public hearing today or hold items to discuss on board, Commissioner, as to the evening. All business-wise to bring up.
Not at all.
Okay. New items, Little League agreements, and Suicide Convention. I'm still missing three years of data I hope to have next year. At twenty five fifteen, shorted out.
So you got that one for?
Yeah, move it to next week, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And then we'll do project updates. So Little League agreement for that, Commissioner, since we're heading the effort, so.
Okay, so. Oh, you have colored copies, haven't you? So, just this, so today is going to be a good first step. I've had some meetings with Rich Pascozzi, who's the president of, let's see, Youth Baseball Softball Association. I always want to call it Little League, but it's.
It may be West Spring.
West Spring.
Yes.
So, just as our backstory on this, what we're going to be discussing is what essentially is referred to as a farm colony in North Warren, Russell area, I guess, which is a piece of property owned by the county. It was originally part of the transfer property, as part of the North Warren land deal. And what has essentially happened over the past, you know, many years. Yeah, plus. Past thirty-plus years is that various youth baseball softball organizations have kind of invested money in developing a property up there with the consent of prior boards of commissioners in one degree or another, but it's always been kind of a difficult situation because there's never been like a real, you know, firm legal understanding of how everything is set up up there. At some point in the past, there was a lease agreement with Bakerth Baseball. That would have been in the eighties and, to this day, I haven't ever seen it. I know somebody has, somebody has it somewhere. Bakerth Baseball no longer exists, to my knowledge, and, but the utilization of those fields up there are continuing. So, I've been aware of this, it's been a priority on some level for a while to kind of address this issue. And I know that for the Little League, there's been a lot of concern about, you know, long-term stability with the site because they were always afraid that the county was going to come in and develop it or do something with it. And so, I had the pleasure of going to one of the Little League games and they're Little League board meetings, which upon walking into the room, there was a very hushed silence that came over because they, I think that they were all waiting for some kind of bad news. And they were all kind of shocked that I wanted to talk to them about what we can do in order to kind of cement their position up there and kind of make a more formal alliance, if you will, to develop that area as a recreational amenity. So, Rich very graciously has met with me and Dan Blotts on a couple of occasions to discuss kind of the parameters and how to go and what we could do, you know, to help each other. One of the first things Little League did was provide a draft lease agreement that the county to evaluate with the solicitor. The management has looked through it and made some minor changes to it just to kind of address a lot of wording related to us and maybe make it a little bit more of a complete agreement. All of the major parameters in it are the same, so it is a one dollar a year lease agreement. All the material that is put on the field is owned still by the organization. I think that there are just some parameters in it now that have to do with just kind of notifying us of any changes and stuff like that or anything that you guys are going to attempt to do. But actually, would you care to weigh in on your changes, actually?
Sure, no problem. As far as the term goes, it's an initial term of three years. It'll automatically renew consecutive terms of three years up to fifteen years. One dollar a year. We just said we're spelling out maintenance, use of the apartment, or high maintenance compromises. We are looking for, on behalf of, I don't know if you guys have a solicitor, I mean, you happen to work with them, as far as how you run your board meetings and, you know, maybe get copies of your organic documents to make sure you guys are, you know, keeping your taxes in compliance, you know, or status. Improvement allows you to make improvements, does require consent on commissions. That's on section nine. If the county wants to conduct activities under section ten, you know, they just have to coordinate. There is some insurance, there's some, you know, indemnification, dislocation, standard terms. And then we just have a standard boilerplate language, section thirteen and R. So, in general, I mean, I did start with the temple that he provided, but I just tried to go from there.
Looks pretty good to me, I'll take it to our board and make sure it's great with all of our board members. Our secretary and treasurer keep track of all the agreements and all the, our budget and all that stuff, so. Again, don't actually have a solicitor, but they're in part soliciting for, you know, that's our solicitors.
Well, I'm glad to work with, you know, you and either you can contact Jeff or I.
Sure. Sounds good. I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this. For a lot of years, we've had a lot of plans to, you know, help out with, you know, making the community better for Little League and for the kids. And, you know, it's hard to put money into something and you don't know whether it's going to be gone next year, next year, or whatever. Just for example, in the last two years, our, we went from about three hundred and fifty kids to almost six hundred.
That's great.
You know, with everything else in the community declining, we're increasing in numbers. We have a lot of travel teams, which is not in our Little League or youth baseball. It's separate, they use those fields and utilize them, and we try to work with them to help them. They have their own insurances and, you know, they're covered that way, legally. But, you know, some of those members sit on hard work now, so they're doing repairs to the fields and maintenance and such. So that way, we have kind of a working agreement with them. And talking to them, going back to Little League, which Little League, just to give you a quick heads up on that, is they charge about five thousand dollars a year for a charter. And when Warren became a city, they wanted us to have a charter big enough for a city. So, that made us have two charters. We had to split Warren down the middle, so it was ten thousand dollars. And that was a lot of money for us just to say that we were part of Little League. So that's when we stepped away and became a one-county youth baseball and softball association under our own entity, which then took us away from Little League, so we couldn't participate in All-Stars and all the, you know, stuff at the end of the season for, you know, that kind of stuff. So now, these travel teams are saying if we get back to Little League as a charter and we've talked to them about, you know, our Little League members in this community, you know, we're setting at under six hundred players, we should be thrown into the city, you know, big city charter requirements. So, working with them, we're almost there. If we get back into Little League International, then all these travel teams will come back and play for us because of the, you know, ability to play in the All-Stars and travel teams and so on and so forth, which should increase our, you know, numbers significantly. And last year, with this increase in players, we had a hard time. We were playing five days a week and some Saturdays, and we don't want to play on Sunday morning. And practices on Sundays because, you know, just a day for family is what I feel. So, you know, I try, we try to not do that, but without putting something into these fields, that area up there and adding a couple of new fields, we're not going to have enough fields in the county. We're already using, utilizing two fields in Youngsville, two fields in Sheffield, this field in Charter Grove that we revamped behind the old school up there, using the Russell's Larnor and Warner fields. So, we're using every field that we have available, and we didn't have enough fields this year. We had games that we actually, my father was president of the league back in the eighties. He put the lights on Bets Jackson, so we got those fired back up, it cost him a little bit to do that. And then we got the lights back at Farm Colony working this year. We actually had night games to try to alleviate some of those field concerns where we just didn't have enough fields here for all the teams that needed to play.
Well, the thing is, is when you have the fields for out, it's tough because everybody's traveling between. So you can't run on this quickly, probably isn't like as well concentrated to do.
And in our plan contingent upon our lease agreement, we applied for a couple of grants to help with building or maintaining the fields that are up there. And we also just applied for, and it looks like we may get some money for a playground. We're going out there because we have so many kids playing, the siblings are running around all over the place. And we just think as a board, it would be really nice to have a, you know, a playground there that's, you know, enclosed, fenced in, so, you know, little Joey and little Bobby can go play in the playground while mom and dad are watching or roaching and bowling. So we have some really, you know, good things that we want to do up there. This will get us to, you know, being a little more confident putting money up there. We actually own Bets Jackson field, so we put our, you know, we feel comfortable putting money into that, but, you know, weren't sure where we were setting with Farm Colony. So, we really appreciate you guys, you know, Commissioner Jordan, with us, but, you know, we stayed in agreement. Now, I don't know if anybody's looked at this map, but it came to our attention once Jeff and I started talking that part of Northwest Savings has part of our field on, in this one little corner here and this in the other. So I've been talking to Steve Bell, who is a person in charge of the Northwest Savings property up there. We're trying to figure out, sort of, having an agreement where, you know, maybe that won't be an issue in the future.
Yeah, well, all he would tell you is that, you know, assessment.
Oh, I wasn't, I wanted to say it.
Assessment is the show of all, right? Don't care what his name is, reliability is, you know, surveyor, you know, whatever the, what our ground or what the heat said, just surveyor follows. So, so that might indicate something certainly not definitive. So I would encourage you just to, you know, investigate the matter for yourselves and, and make old deeds just to take a look at them as well.
The red area is the wetlands?
Yeah, the red area is the wetlands that they put in last fall. But that field that's right below those wetlands is pretty much lost now, and that's another issue we had. The reason that, you know, maybe move a field into this, into this one of these.
Your field here, you're saying is lost?
It's, it's still wet right now because of the construction they did up there that we didn't play any gigs on it until about.
The two in light pink?
The two in light pink are not fields. Those are the part proposed area to put some fields in. And then where the roadway or where this other pink one is, that's actually, the road comes through there. And if we can or we get permission, we'd like to just, where that circle is by northwest, just come off of that and go straight through in front of our sheds and move that roadway and put a field in right there. And that kind of alleviates some of the. And then the other thing is with the fields, we always, I know there's a lot of drainage issues up there. And I think by putting these fields in and routing the water, fields are going to absorb more water than just the hard ground that's there right now. So I think, you know, dirt in fields, grassy areas and, you know, drainage around them, if we can get that all into this wetlands area, I think, well, still would be good for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, so this brings up a couple of things that I want to just discuss. One is, is this, the timing of this is very good because once we get the lease agreement done, part of this is going to be taking this whole area and putting it in the recreational plan, which you're fortunately on the steering committee for, because the recreational plan is really important in drawing down state and federal funds in order to help develop these areas. We really, that's part of the real important thing of making this like a formal collaboration just because there's a lot we can do to actually get new funding. Whenever we do projects, we're constantly trying to scramble to get like a local match of some kind. And I keep saying, like, they're already spending money up there, like, we should make their money, make more money, you know, in order to do the developments up there. So, a couple of the things that we really want to work on a comprehensive plan on together, and this can be part of the recreational plan, can even be something that we do on our own in order to speed it up, is kind of addressing how this gets developed up there, especially with the stormwater situation because there are implications beyond just the fields, but these properties along the roadway, which with the increased rains and flooding that we've had over the past few years, has become a bigger and bigger issue. And what would be great is if we could do, write a grant to kind of do, to kind of rework that area, get the water off of there and on the other side of this road. And what we've talked about doing is is having some kind of drainage system that runs next to these properties because we really want to wrap the water around the whole thing. And, and over here, we want to get it to the river, and, and this whole side over here is essentially a swamp. I mean, nothing's ever going to get built over there, we just got to get it under the roadway, which is, which is a challenge. That's something we'd have to work on with Penda. But that's much easier to do when we have like a comprehensive plan or as in, like, which the recreation plan will be.
We did have a DAP person come on to look at the fields and some of our water issues.
Oh, great.
And he said the best way to get rid of water on this field would be to drill eight-inch holes down. And that fellow was saying, and, you know, put a little bit of topsoil back over and kind of like, permeate the ground so the water has a place to go.
Yeah.
And he suggested that on to the wet area, or wet areas up.
Yeah, because this section over here is just, it's like, there can be as much as a foot of water, standing water there, whatever it is.
And then the other, exactly, I had mentioned to our board is we have all this idle ground that's behind the concession stands that goes down over to those other properties.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's not going to be utilized for anything, maybe that's a good place for a catch basin.
Yeah.
Type of something to, you know, drain, catch all that water, rinse it slowly down, like you said, across the.
Yeah, because, because this, like, light area right here, there's like a trench that basically runs through there and then just filters it right there, and, and so, yeah, if we could dig that out and then, you know.
Oh, yeah, if you have an extra, yeah, that'd be great things. But, yeah, that's, it, there's a lot of things that could be done up there. I don't know if you guys have heard or seen any of the praise. About this church up in Russell, has put it in what they call the hub, and it's just this outdoor building that they're going to be able to play baseball and basketball and all these sports inside. And it's basically just a, almost like a dome-looking thing that they're just directing and compartmentalizing. But, you know, it's going to be open to the community and, I mean, we have enough property up there. If we could get grants, I could see that in the future, having something like that that we use, utilized by, you know, soccer or basketball or, you know, school sports or whatever, to make that. I, I don't want it just to be more kind of these baseball and softball area. I think there's a lot of property, if developed properly, we could utilize it for, you know, other areas.
Yeah.
Because, you know, there is that area up above and then, you know, there's, you know, just because we have the ball fields drawn in there, it's about close to forty thousand dollars to put in the ball field correctly. You know, we have the drainage and the field and the fence and everything done, so, you know. It's, without grants and without that kind of support, we're not going to build too many fields too quickly, but we want to, or at least be able to repair what we have or better than possibly build another field in, you know, another year or so, move on from there.
Yeah. Well, I think the thing is, these types of projects fit well in DCNR and their grant programs and whatnot. And we're always looking for opportunities to kind of go after them. And the challenge is always to have like shovel-running projects that have a purpose and then we have a, you know, an audience that we know we're going to fill. It makes it much easier to do that. And we've had conversations too with Dan Blotts, the planning director, about trying to figure out a way to have more indoor options for soccer and baseball. I mean, we have them, you know, by and why for, and other organizations for basketball and, and then there's, you know, there's some options for swimming, but, you know, for soccer, baseball, and some of the other outdoor sports, it's a challenge and, you know, technique to have amenities, most of them. So that, I mean, that's something else that we're trying to take a look at before we take a look at. And that's why, again, it's so important to get the first step of getting all these done so that we can officially kind of move forward with putting our plan together for that other stuff.
Have some funds available to match any grants that we have. We've already had two different firms come up and give us estimates on repairing the fields or, you know, repairing any fields. And, you know, the range from sixteen, the, from twelve to sixteen thousand dollars, so, you know, we figured. And then we applied for baseball tomorrow grants, Pittsburgh Pirates grants. There's multitudinous ones that we've already applied for. We can look back at it, it's like a, a linear process that even get acknowledged. And then, you know, they do give monies out because a bunch of other places have got grants. United or Union City, can, or Corry, some of those little leagues have already got grants. And we've done wonderful things with their fields, so.
So, we have this agreement on the agenda for the month.
I'd like to, my only thing is, is that I'd almost like to give the Little League time to review it and then, and then basically add it to the agenda at the end of the month.
Okay.
Because I think by then, the.
I could, well, we have a meeting on Sunday, so I should.
Yeah.
All right, yes, we'll split off in two weeks.
Yep.
If you could come to that meeting on the twenty.
Twenty fifth, September twenty fifth.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah. One of, just like, one of the things that I had a conversation with Adam and the folks from the Centenary Playground was the idea of believing that Pittsburgh Pirates have a grant program for like a playground for children, especially kids. And definitely would be interested in looking into that as well. Not because he made a comment that we were the only county in Pennsylvania that didn't have one of those in.
Right.
And I think that, I think that that's something that the Rotary Club and that group, they're the same crew that's doing.
I believe the city, we just have found out that Wacy Field will be going away next year. They're just, they're putting a century playground in there, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we would be hoping to, you know, whatever we can do up there, you know, make a better for the community.
Because that's another pot of money that we can try to apply and get in order to expand that.
Well, I appreciate your time and, you know, take this to our board and get it approved and.
Wonderful. Good, thank you so much, Rashid, I really appreciate it.
I'm going to head out.
Happy day.
Missing you, Rashid. Thanks.
Jeff, thank you, Bob.
Thanks.
Okay, so, Pusha's have convention, this is attorney, should I give you anything you want to bring? No, very good. Projects, let's see, bicentennial, I want to let you know that I met, they're called Thompson Thompson, and he's planning on coming, so I would like to, um, send a email. So he will not be able to join us after all that, Thompson Thompson will step up and kind of fill that space. Well, Safety Fair went very well, I thought. I don't know how many hundreds of people came in addition, I mean, just in terms of attendees, when it was.
It was very fertile, I'll mention that.
Yeah.
And it looked like the crowd was really good, I was very impressed with the whole thing.
It went very well, yeah.
Good time, I bow out.
We were coaching someone, Karen, next door, and the helicopter came down, so we're going to remind the coaches next season.
Just shut down.
That there's a, well, you see a helicopter, it looks like it's going to land on the soccer field, it's just the little safety bear.
Well, I, I don't know, my experience with coaching kids is the goal is to keep you focused on the game. And when anything happens outside, like, they immediately are looking at it and then, I mean, you know what I mean?
You know what, like, my kids are well-coached apparently, I said.
There you go.
Each and girls, it's like they didn't even know that.
Did there was a helicopter landing?
No, it was like, everybody kept playing, the refs kept repaying, I went like, stop, stop. And then I go like, oh, wait, safety fair, so.
Well, I'm very pleased, and I want to thank the staff that turned on primarily Scott Rose, Kayla Sp, and, um, Kim Horst and me, and, uh, other staff, I should mention. Obviously, I've been looking at the other departments that went, like Sheriff's Office, Police Department. And there were so many organizations that were represented, I really appreciate it.
Emily wanted me to just convey that she was very happy that you had that all set, get the fire certification.
Oh, yeah.
For home school kids, just because.
Yeah.
Was he there when you came?
No, Emily, yeah, nowadays, there's like fifteen different things that go on at the same time, so, didn't get to make it. But she, she took them last year and did the whole certification, but, but just, you have to, you have to do that as part of being home school.
Yeah, I remember that, being home school kid, I remember like in the nineties, I had like a little firehouse or something for a little training. This is just the equivalent.
Well, and for a lot of parents that don't understand how all that works, it's a, you know, it's like, well, what do I do with them? Like, how do I, you know?
Right, yeah. Good. The radio system, quick update, the police are scheduled to cut over, leaving a new system on the twenty fourth. Yep, that's great. So, the P I, what P I is, the city, there'll be the city police, Alamo police. The sheriff's office is already cut over. And the O S will be, so, yeah, T I N S, the, if I'm in the States, sorry. T U is, laws have been shut down a couple of years ago, so, there's, it would just those three agencies. And then probation would come along with them, I think. Does anything law, the DA's office. So they will be live here in a couple of weeks, hopefully, and then I'll have a date, you know, on FireSight. I stopped by the Foundation for Sustainable Forestry, they have, they just expanded it over sixteen hundred acres in southwest of Otanche area. If you're not familiar with them, they're, I think they came to Metlin several years ago.
Yeah.
They were told us about the plans that they had, and I doubt because they more or less completed that first big phase that they were going after. So now that they have sixteen seven hundred acres, it's. So now that they have sixteen seven hundred acres, it's a, it's a pretty impressive operation. Basically, they are doing research there, uh, in the southwest side of the county on, basically, even the little harvesting. So they're not like quick cutting and they're not, you know, insisting that, uh, should we cut, it's like really healthy balance, partnership with D C N R. And our representative, Rapp, is able to come to a really nice little event and we were able to show us because they've been building like five hundred acres, you know, every couple of years. Like what it looks like when, like right now, they actually just went through and sprayed it and it looks terrible in five hundred acres. But then you could go where they were, they did two, two years ago and it's like really impressive is the, you know, the annual growth being managed and. So anyway, interesting organizations and thinking about, I think. Uh, let's see, I wanted to know since I was on the radio, the tiny note about the sidewalk, it didn't get to the heat of the end date, so, is sidewalk gonna happen this fall?
Yes.
Yes, they are starting this week and that's why the Fourth Street entrance is blocked on. And I did put a public notice in the paper today so that everybody is aware of it. From now until further notice that the Fourth Street entrance will be shut off and they'll have to come in through the entrance, I think.
There, um, I meant with Bob.
Right.
What's Bob's name, last name, I can't remember, or whatever. Anyway, Bob, the, the director of Swanson Sons, who's, uh, who's doing the sidewalk, uh, I don't know his name, I don't know. I met with him this morning and, um, basically think the big thing I were coordinating on is, is when these, when these entrances are gonna be shut down. Just because they're gonna have to be periodically, so that's an issue for probation and any means. I think what we'll do is have a conversation with Pam about what the schedule is and then like send that out to everybody so that everybody's aware of kind of how that's gonna affect things. Cause the sidewalk project is gonna be pretty invasive as far as like foot traffic and just parking and everything with the development. But we feel pretty confident that it's gonna get done by, by the end of October. The big thing is, is, uh, it's probably going to push off the parking lot project until the spring. We're gonna meet with, we're gonna have conversations with, uh.
Huber.
Huber, uh, about it to see where they're at. But I just have, I just have a feeling, given all the other stuff that we have going on, it will probably get shut off until the spring, but we'll see, that may change.
That's it, cap twenty two, so I'm like, and it's in bad shape and you don't really want the liability of, you know, the damaged parking lot is there. On the other hand, we'll get to skip the winter months and.
Well, the only challenge, the big challenge with pushing it off until the spring is for about two feet around the entire sidewalk, there's going to be gravel. Like it's gonna be dug out and there'll be gravel and then when they do, if they do it in the spring, they're gonna have to mill everything, including the gravel. And and there's some stuff that the blacktop company's gonna have to do in order to, to get that dug back out and then, you know, redo it. So, um, that's kind of the downside of it, but at this stage, it's probably won't ever get done. Depends on what the blacktop company's schedule is like going, you know, cause once you get into October, everything gets real sketchy as far as like their ability to, to mobilize equipment and.
Well, that and our air conditioning units are pushed out to November. And there'll be a big crank, well, we don't want to have the nice sidewalk and then have the crank sitting.
Right, yeah. The, the one thing that we have to work on is, um, the company that did the.
Durable.
Yeah. The lift ran over the sidewalk, kind of, I saw on the data, they were very nice about, they're gonna take care of it. We just, probably what's gonna happen is, is we're gonna get a quote for the few blocks that are crushed over here. And then basically hold off until next year and then do the whole walk, you know, just review it and then just have durable pay for the part of the damage.
Oh, something else, yes.
Yeah, the one thing that we have to work on is, is the, the train, the, the wagon train that they left out to the front of the building. Is, uh, we're, we're probably with the way things, we're gonna talk to them, we're gonna see if Swanson Sons can handle that, but they're, they're not a landscaping company. And so I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna talk directly to Durable about them handling, they're, they're, they probably have people that they work with and do that. They, they offered to do it, we just said that, well, we have this other company out, we'll have them look at it, so, um, so that'll be taken care of. We have, uh, we're scheduled a date for, you would have gotten an invitation for it, for a presentation by Durable. That's going to be September thirtieth. So Durable Slate is going to come to the work session on the thirtieth, they're gonna do a presentation of the before and after, all the work that was done on the roof. All the slate work and everything. And then in the evening at five o'clock, we're going to do a walk around with Durable Slate. So anybody from the public, any elected officials, anybody that the community is interested to see the work that was done and walk around and look at it and do it at five o'clock on the thirtieth. So, and I just, I can't say enough good things about Durable Slate and the job that they did on the roof. They've just been fantastic to work with, so.
Agreed. They're done, right?
They've got another day.
Yeah, they'll be done by the end of the week. And then sixteen is when the.
Next Monday, the scaffold is coming down. And then Prairie has like a week or two worth of work that they're gonna do and, um.
And then the stone will go on after the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Good, anything else for the facilities? All right, uh, the rest of the, we had a discussion about entrepreneurial mindset training called Ice House. We are a go on that, we're gonna apply for assistance, we did apply for assistance of care and we were recorded and have. More than thirteen, more than a dozen people signed up to take it, all of the human services sector, so I think that's an exciting idea. It's taking like a mindset training and then doing it with a group of influencers, largely the list is taken off of the task force list.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'm pretty excited about that. Uh, that will be taking place this fall, so. Uh, that's it for me on projects, anything for you?
Um, I'm gonna be sending emails out today, um, in the next couple of hours to all of the municipalities related to the LERT program. That's gonna include the, the info document that I sent to everybody, the forty page, you know, like edge of your seat read that just, you know, will keep you so engaged with the concept. Tax evasion and you won't even know what to do, so. Yeah, they described it to insomniacs, you don't respond to strong drugs, it's, it's very impressive, so. But anyway, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna be sending that, the info document around, the draft documents for all of the municipalities. And then also, I've already started putting together, basically I'm waiting to, to just finalize things with Attorney Schmidt. And then also, I've already got the page set up for the LERT program on the site. That'll have all the information that's downloadable, including links to like the other ordinances that other counties and municipal past. Every bit of research that I've done on it. I'm gonna send that all out today with the goal of getting everybody, you know, lined up calendar wise to do their public hearings or do the joint public hearing with us. And then I'm also gonna follow that up with, I'm gonna call every county supervisor and, and municipal official that's associated with it personally, they're answering the questions that they have about, for the last couple of days. Well, I, 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 I'm at this point now where I'm kind of, like, I, I, I guess I've sank enough time into it that I can't let it go anywhere, like, you know, you know. Like, so, uh, so maybe I'm, I'm bird dogging it maybe a little bit, but I'm not gonna make shit, but, you know, I, I just think it's an important issue that I wanna see through, so.
Agreed.
And Attorney Schmidt's been very good about working with me and working with the other solicitors to try to, you know, get everybody's concerns channeled as much as possible. And, you know, try to address any, you know, lingering questions, so I feel really good about it, right?
Very good. In terms of the, of the commissioners meeting, we have a whole lot, only request for this.
Oh, well, one.
Proclamation.
So, the only thing that I just wanted to, cause I, cause I don't know how this, this kind of snuck up on me, I should have had it, I should have had it ready at the last. The, uh, the last, I mean, what is the proclamation?
Yeah.
Well, I, I have the, the Allegheny River watershed that, and last year we gave four hundred dollars of Act thirteen funds. And I just wanted to do the same thing this year and support their effort and, and then we're gonna, the Allegheny River plan is happening now.
Right.
But once they're ready to do the proclamation, I was gonna invite people there, we're gonna do it. The other thing is, it isn't listed here, um, we have another proclamation for, uh, uh, I can't believe we're driving a blind guy in some. Folks, I'm doing two, I like got too many things going, it's for, uh, uh, the, the folks who work with disabilities, folks with disabilities, the, um.
I mean, you know.
No, 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 uh.
That's on the list.
Yeah.
It's August twenty.
Did that go on the twenty fifth?
Disabilities, people with disabilities and.
No, no, yeah, um, just a minute, just clear with me.
Well, is there anything else that belongs on the agenda to watch out for?
Yeah, direct support professionals we have.
Yes.
So, uh, I wanna, I wanna get that on the agenda. The big reason I'm asking is, um, uh, Ron, Ron has got several people that are come from, um, Achievement Center or, no, Lake Shore Community Service. One of their workers was honored with like a state award at the end of last year, which is after the Direct Support Professionals Week. So they're gonna be there to, to give them honor and then to do the proclamations. I just wanted to let you know because that's why they're gonna show up.
Okay. Anything interesting on your schedule? By the way, are you going to the university for that thing?
Is that this weekend?
It's next weekend.
You're planning on?
The topic this year is really pointed for us, I think, because it's about rural economic development.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm, actually I had to hurry up the phone, I did it. I, I've just been holding off because I'm scared, that's crazy.
Yeah, just wanted to raise it if you'd mind you.
That's a good event.
Yep.
Always very interesting.
Department, any updates?
Um, now that our new voting machines, those are here, I'll be playing a public demo probably mid-October. So it's fresh, it was not really coming up till election day, I haven't got anything planned yet, but it's, um, I can just do.
Great, hey, can you set up the senior expo as well?
What is that?
Just right around then.
It's at the end.
I'll save for, yeah, it's like the last day of October, I must say.
You can do that, yeah, I can do that also.
But, yeah, something like that.
Agreed.
Do you want any?
Just getting ready to match the tattoo.
What date again?
September twenty third, last day of page, twenty fifth. And we stopped taking personal checks for now, until then, I think this morning we had three hundred and ninety six progress.
Okay.
Put the eye light up. We'll be at about down to sixty to seventy, right?
It's like the twenty fourth.
Twenty third, yeah.
Okay, any, any for executive session?
It's October twenty fourth, it's the senior expo, J C C, over there, senior expo, over twenty fifth, right, twelve thirty.
Is that something we'll just set up a table and call?
I could send, I have to talk to Sue anyway, cause I don't wanna be there, so I'll, I'll coordinate through.
You know what, maybe, maybe a shorter one.
Okay, so for executive session, discuss.
Sure. Uh, or the Madison, I think.
Uh, okay, very good. And then one more announcement, Jeff and I had a brief, sort of quasi-executive session this morning to discuss a, an employee's performance. And also groundskeeping, basically, whatever, try to contract that out, right? Anything else? Then we will retire to executive session.